Meeting to order. Today, we've got kind of a special program to get us started for American Founders and Constitution Month. If you didn't know, on September 17th, 1787, so 236 years ago, the US Constitution was signed by our American founding fathers. And just recently, the Utah State Legislature passed a bill and the governor signed a House Bill 179, which declares September as American Founders and Constitution Month. And it, part of this bill really encourages local governments to recognize the signing of the Constitution and to participate in the celebration of that in one way. So as we were, as a city, talking about what's the best way that we can do this and honor this process and our country's Constitution, we decided, well, why don't we see if we can get some of our incredible students, local kids from the Boys and Girls Club over to come and be a part of our city council meeting. So first, I'm going to have Killian Cole come on up, and he's going to lead the pledge of allegiance for us. So if we'd all stand, and we'll repeat after Killian.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible, just as for all.
I like that pace. We should do that. We should do that pace more often.
Killian, we are going to get out of here so fast tonight, thanks to your pace. Thank you. All right, Bella, I'll invite you to come on up to the podium. So Bella is going to read the preamble to the Constitution. And again, for the preamble, this is 52, just 52 words long, but really is intended to set the stage for the law that is the Constitution. It sets out five objectives agreed upon by the framers in 1787. So Bella, invite you to take it away.
We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America.
Thank you, Bella. Great job. And lastly, Hayes gets the most exciting job by reading the proclamation that we have, recognizing American Founders and Constitution Month. I was telling Hayes before this that, you know, don't worry about it because I make mistakes all the time as I'm reading things. And proclamations sometimes have big tricky words in them, or just our regular resolutions, when I say facade instead of facade, it's fine. So I'd say be at ease, but we appreciate you being here and take it away.
Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America stands as a timeless testament to the enduring principles of democracy, freedom, and equality upon which our great nation was founded, and whereas September 17th marks the anniversary of the signing of the Constitution in 1787, a document that has served as a beacon of hope and a model for domestic governance around the world, and whereas Governor Spencer Cox signed HB 179 in 2023, which declares that the month of September shall be commemorated as American Founders and Constitution Month, and whereas all Utah adults and schoolchildren are invited to celebrate American Founders and Constitution Month by reading directly from the United States Constitution and other primary sources, and to be taught principles from the United States Constitution, and whereas the Constitution has been the source of inspiration, guidance, and protection for the American people for over two centuries, guaranteeing the rights and liberties that define the American way of life, and whereas it is fitting and proper that we come together to celebrate the Constitution, reflect upon its significance, and reaffirm our commitment to upholding the principles and values sternished within it, and whereas we encourage active, the one word I can't read.
Participation.
Participation in our democratic process, including voting and civic engagement to ensure the continued strength of our constitutional democracy, and whereas we strive to engage in civic education and dialogue to better understand the rights and responsibilities conferred by the Constitution.
Thank you so much, Hayes. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that I, Mayor Marcus Stevenson, and the City Council of Midvale City do hereby proclaim that Midvale City recognizes the month of September as American Founders and Constitution Month, adopted on this 19th day of September 2023. Can we give them a round of applause? And now, we're going to invite you, if you'd like to come up here, we've got a little card and a thank you for you, and we'll take some photos. Do you want them on the?
I think we'll just do the.
So come on, you want them over here, Laura, will you?
Are we doing a picture?
That's what we do. We have one of those for each of you. It's a bookmark and a pen. There we go. There's that. There's that. And then, yeah, we'll take a picture. Move over. Our group together, over here. Just like that.
He's going to come over. He's going to come to this side of Killian.
He can stand up there. That's perfect. Yes, right there. Yes. That's perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Just a huge thank you to the Boys and Girls Club for being just such a great partner to the city. We ask them to do a lot of random things with us, and they always say, of course, we'll do it. So we just really appreciate it, and again, appreciate the three of you being here and being a part of this. So for those of you that might be interested in getting a Constitution pocketbook, just know that we do have some outside, that you are welcome to take home with you. All right. Now I gotta check my notes, make sure I'm not missing anything here. We are good. Next up, we are going to have the Unified Police Department report, and we will hear from Chief Thomas. I just have to say, for our UFA folks being called out, I think they're going to blame that on me because they came in and I said, oh, so it's a slow night, and they said, ah, you don't say that. And then I said, well, it becomes busy, you can blame me, and then look at them go.
I've never seen them leave that fast before. That was.
It's the oldest trick in the book. I just liked, good evening again, and thank you for the workshop session we had earlier. So my, my comments will be brief. I'm just going to give you just a personnel update. Kind of proud and yet humbled to say that I'm losing a couple of my really top guns at the precinct. Officer Johnny Noe has been selected to be one of our Metro Gang officers, so he'll be going up to MGU here. We also have Ryan Smithson, who is one of our graveyard shift leads. He's a fairly new officer, but really has a lot of great potential and leadership qualities, was just chosen to take over in a canine position. And so he'll be getting a new dog here in the near future. We're, we're going to kind of time release as we can with manpower. A good thing to say is, we do have Officer Morgan Matthews, I think I've mentioned that before, that he's, he's had some surgeries and his intent is to retire with his full, you know, he'll have his 20 years here in December. So he's kind of timed his, his tune up to get out and with, you know, getting new knees installed and everything. And he'll be sashaying out of our precinct in the near future. The really good news is, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we had Aaron Bartholomew, who was our Officer of the Year, kind of a short, redheaded guy, we just called him Bart. He is coming back to UPD, and I, I may have threatened a couple of people and got him to come back to our precinct. So he does go, we put him through the basic five-week training, just like anyone else. So he'll probably be teaching some of the new people up at the rifle range, because he's a firearms instructor, but he is coming back to UPD and will be back in our precinct in short time. I want to kind of publicly recognize our Public Works and their efforts up on Coliseum Way. We had some requests from our Shelter Resource Officers to assist, as well as some of the businesses up there with some, some red curbing that would stop some of the transient parking and issues we had at the top of Coliseum, just outside the gates at the Road Home. Once they got that order done, it was, next thing I know, I had, I think it was Mr. Josephson from Josephson Trucking calling and complimenting not only UPD, but Public Works. I shared that message with the mayor, as well as his city manager, so I appreciate that. I do want to publicly acknowledge Nate's beard is looking very fantastic. I mentioned that this morning. It's very, come in very well. That concludes my comments. I do want to, I asked Chief Mazron to stick around just a little bit longer, and I want to recognize a rock star in our community that really helped our community. And if I could have Michaela come up here. Michaela is one of our graffiti abatement personnel. We call them the Rag Team, the Residents Against Graffiti. Michaela, if you'll recall, on Labor Day, we got slammed over there on Princeton, and I read about it, I saw it on the Midvale Resident Page, I was like, just dreading it. And when I rolled into work Tuesday morning, the first thing I did is roll through there. I'm like, where is it? It's not here. Even the pictures I saw on the sound wall had been cleaned up. And this little, little tiny whizbang next to me came out on Labor Day, and, you know, we were all taking Labor Day off, but apparently she didn't want to do that. So she, single-handedly, not as a team, generally, there's two of them, but she came out on Labor Day and cleaned up 70-plus, I believe. And I, I've been bragging about her. I asked if she could come here and be recognized in front of the council. She went, she did a huge job in a favor to the precinct. And actually, her supervisor wrote up a commendation letter for her. And if, Chief Mazron, if you'd come up and read that, I'd appreciate it.
I'd love to read that. I haven't done this for a while, from this podium, but thanks for asking me, Randy. On Monday, September 4th, 2023, Michaela Kundick, a graffiti abatement technician with Residents Against Graffiti, single-handedly cleaned a grand total of 76 sites in Midvale City. Here's what gets wild. It was Labor Day, which is a holiday for Michaela, but she decided to come to work instead of taking the day off. 66 of the total 76 sites cleaned were gang-related graffiti. All 66 gang-related sites were in Midvale City boundaries. Michaela took care of more graffiti in one shift than she and her coworker normally do on any given day. Michaela accomplished this alone on a holiday and proactively with no supervisory direction. We wish to recommend, recognize, commend, and applaud Michaela's initiative, good judgment, determination, and work ethic. Michaela works hard every day. Her outstanding performance on what should have been a day off is just another example for hard work and dedication to the Salt Lake Area Gang Project and the Residents Against Graffiti Program. The work they do has a visible impact on the neighborhoods of Midvale City and throughout Salt Lake County. Chief Thomas expressed his utmost appreciation for these efforts on a holiday weekend. Midvale fell victim to a spree of tagging, which had the residents of the city expressing frustration, aggravation on the social media and to the city officials. The Tuesday after the holiday, Chief Thomas went to assess the damage on his way to the office and was shocked to find the damage had been covered and the issues were remediated. He understands the problems this type of vandalism can bring to a neighborhood if not addressed quickly. And that's an important part of this, is if you don't jump on that stuff, it can escalate things. The Residents Against Graffiti Program is highly successful because the people, because of the people who do this work, like Michaela, are dedicated, hardworking, and take great pride in the communities they serve. Thank you, Michaela.
Thank you.
Good job.
Just, just real quick, I've done drive-by coinings to you before when they've been on the side of the road, and I see them, I'm like, stop! And I get the little Midvale Challenge Coins. So this time, I'm giving her a UPD watchdog. It's not much, but it's tiny like you, but vicious. So thank you, Michaela. We appreciate you so much. And she actually has Tracy as her mother. She's also UPD HR specialist with us, and family's here to see her recognized, but we appreciate the heck out of her.
Well, thank you so much. I just have to say that, as you all know, Residents Against Graffiti just does not get the credit that they deserve. Our residents, I know, we all hear about it. Our residents definitely see when graffiti goes up, but they also see when it goes down. And so your team definitely helps make us look good. We probably take the credit, you know, when they see something and they're thanking us, but really, it's you out there doing the actual work. So thank you. It is seen and appreciated.
That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions or comments for me tonight? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right, we'll move into our public comments. Any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this point by stepping to the microphone and stating their name for the record. Do we have any public comments tonight? All right, seeing none. We'll move into reports. Just for mine, just a couple of quick things. I know this brought up briefly in the workshop, but just wanted to say, I'm sure our other officers would, would love to have any of you along. I went and did a ride-along with our new Direct Enforcement Unit Sergeant, Aaron Levin. It was fascinating. I did a 10-hour shift for, what time did I start? 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And it was fascinating to see the work that they do specifically off of the 7200 South Corridor, in the hotels, all in that area of how they were, I mean, so much of their focus is getting hard drugs off the street. We've seen an increase in fentanyl specifically coming into the area. And so the entire time they were tracking down, trying to find these folks, they know are bringing it in. And it was just fascinating to see, really opened up my eyes to the work that they're doing and how they try to improve our community as a whole. Secondly, the classic Midvale Main Street Car Show is coming up, not this Saturday, but next, September 30th, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM here on Midvale Main. So come and join us for that. And then Saturday, October 7th, I've got my second Skate with the Mayor event at the Copper View Skate Park. Really excited about that, where we've got several organizations coming, participating with us. We're actually getting 16 brand-new skateboards to give out to kids within the community. There's a nomination forum out and about right now, specifically within our schools and different nonprofits, where we'll be trying to get some skateboards into deserving kids' hands. So I'm really excited about that one. And then lastly, the Next Gen Initiative, we've been going through an application process for that for all throughout the summer, and that officially kicks off October 3rd. So if anybody knows anybody who'd be interested in serving on kind of this youth advisory group, Next Gen, the application closes this Friday. That's all I've got. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I attended the coffee with the mayor last Friday night, and I wanted to thank not only the mayor, but also city staff for putting on a really good, informative little walk through everything that's going on Main Street. And I also want to thank the community for, actually, we had quite a bit of support for that and quite a bit of attendance, and I love to see that, and I hope we actually just continue to grow that. So thanks for everyone on that one. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I also should have mentioned my, my thanks. I know I expressed it over a message, but we had over 30 people at the Walk and Talk on Main, and really appreciate Nate, Maggie, and Cody being at that. I know everybody really enjoyed it. Councilmember Glover?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Dettl?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say thank you to the chief, and we have some parking issues, and sometimes I feel like, you know, actually, the chief comes up first in my phone whenever I text anyone, which I, is kind of strange, but I do appreciate all the work you guys do. Sorry to be a pain, but we've got some large vehicles who like to park for days at a time. And I think I've gotten my part of it down pat. I take pictures with time and date on them and collect them, and then send them along to the chief. So it's kind of fun, but I wish, you know, some folks would just not park where they're not supposed to park. Other than that, I did want to ask, I just got a message a few minutes ago from a resident in the townhomes, single-family homes behind Topgolf. They're doing a repaving, which is, you know, they're funding that sort of thing, but they're wondering if they could park overnight in Bingham Junction Park, just to get some of the cars off the street, and wanted to make sure if they did that, they wouldn't be towed or have any unforeseen issues parking there. So, and not to put you on the spot, but.
The answer, I mean.
Thumbs up from everyone? Okay.
I mean, the.
And as long as it's not me texting the chief saying, come get these cars.
I think that's, I think there's that element of it. I don't think that that, although later, we'll be talking about some related issues about curfews and things in the park, but there's nothing that would prevent them from doing that. And then.
At least for this time.
I would just suggest scheduling with Susie on the dates so that there's not a rental that same evening. So there's not a conflict there. I don't know when they're planning on it, that we just.
I think it was October 5th.
Yeah, so.
Other than that, I don't, Public Works doesn't have an issue.
Okay.
I'll follow up with Susie to make sure that there's nothing that's going to conflict with that, October 5th.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is also, though, that there's, I mean, there are vandalism, there's vandalism that occurs at our parks, and I would hope that nothing would occur there, but there's always that possibility. And they should probably be made aware that there are some of those issues.
I'll let her know that as well. Okay, thank you for that. And just real quick, I wanted to acknowledge the fact that, you know, as a city, we've had a lot of large issues that we've dealt with over the past few months, basically from every department you can think of, legal, community development, UPD, Public Works. And I just wanted to acknowledge just what a great job. I think that everyone does. You know, we have some disagreements from time to time, but I think that there are always healthy and productive disagreements. So I really just wanted, you know, we've, I feel like in other years since I've been on council, we've had like one or two big issues that we've dealt with. And it seems like now we're dealing with three or four large, complicated, time-consuming issues at a time. So those of you in the audience who work for the city, thank you for all that you do, UPD, Public Works. UPD, Public Works, city manager, elected officials, Rory, IT, everyone, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmembers Sperry.
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. They just repaved Millennial Way, right? Millennial Way, is it behind McDonald's? I've said this a handful of times. I think it would be a good time, now that it's coned off, that we should look at at least paving, painting half of in front of that karate place red. Because if someone parks directly to the edge of it, it, it blocks the lane, even if someone's trying to turn right on a 7200. And so, like today was a very good example, since I drive this every day. Because of the cones, they were, they were a little bit further out. There was a huge line. And if people could turn, could get into the right-hand turn lane, it would cut that line down drastically. So, we need to paint that curb red to a point where cars can get into the right-hand turn lane. Because right now, the right-hand turn lane starts right where people can park. So, unless it's a green light, there's a backup. But now would be a good time to do it since it's already coned off. Is that something we could look into? Does that make sense? What I'm saying?
Yeah.
And, and the second one, this is like the, I don't know how many election cycles I've been through now. And normally, you know, we've had different candidates and stuff, and I try not to, to talk about it. But the bond thing already makes me a little bit nervous that we, that, you know, it presents a little bit of a false hope, I think, to people by, you know, let's say this passes with overwhelming numbers, we're not guaranteed we're going to get this, this thing, right? But we now have a person running for election that, that kind of is saying, "If I'm elected, I will guarantee that Midvale will get a, a fitness center." And I don't think that's appropriate or fair to everyone up here, right? Because I think we're all sort of working towards that or whatnot. And, and so I'm worried it's, this election cycle is going to add a different layer to that. And I don't know how to fix that because, you know, like, what are, like, what are we supposed to do, right? But, you know, the citizens need to know that we're working on it, that even if the bond passes, it's not up to us to decide who gets the, the fitness center. We, we will put our best foot forward or whatever we want to call, you know, work towards it and, and, and we might be runner-up, right? Which means in 10 years, but, but, you know, in 10 years, that could change because a new city could develop and, you know, some, some new, a new place jumps us. So, you know, I think that's, I think it's an unfair thing to sort of project out there. And I don't know how we, we probably can't say much, but we need to do our part to make it clear how this process works even more so. Because, you know, if people are running off of a, a false claim like that, I think that's inappropriate for the person they're running against and unfair for the rest of us. You know, because it makes it seem like we're not, like, we can't insure it, not because we don't want to. Like, if I could today pick Midvale, I obviously would, right? So, I don't know how we fix that or work on it, but we, we need to be, we need to like quadruple our messaging, I guess is my point, or, or more with the bonding and the process. Because, you know, we just got to get ahead of it. Because I don't want them to think if we don't get it, because, you know, because of us, right? Because of you, because of the staff, because of the elected officials that are here currently. Because that's just not how it works.
If any one person could insure it, we would all insure it.
Yeah, already have done it.
It would have been done a long time ago. I've been working on this for a lot of years.
Just a, a couple of things, not even directly, I guess, responses, but educational related to what you're saying, is that from the staff perspective, one of the challenges that we have on all election-related things is making sure that we are not involving ourselves in the politics of things, right? So, we're setting things up. And without referencing any particular issues that have come up recently, one of the challenges too is just issues with, is that speech or is that infringing on our rights? Like, one of the things, Garrett sent out an email to the candidates...
Stop using our logo?
Rory, sorry, Rory, thank you, sorry. A month or so ago, and yes, it's stuff like, no one should be claiming that the city is endorsing them, nor should they be doing anything like using our logo. That would imply that endorsement exists. And we'll be on top of that in order to try to stop those things from occurring. But it is a challenge as it pertains to things that we may not think are completely accurate and how we're going to deal with that. And to your point, you're right, we're ramping up towards how much we're going to be communicating on this issue. And even with the argument document that we'll be looking at later, we do, you know, not that everyone's going to read this and read that, but I mean, there is language in there that explicitly says that the approval of the bond will not guarantee that we will receive matching funds, but it'll put us in the best foot of the board or whatever. And so, we are trying to both, as you said, be positive, but also have that realism in there. And, but it is within the rights of people who are not acting as the city to, you know, challenge anyone that they think is necessary with political-related things.
Because I get it, like, you could run and say, you know, "If I'm elected, I'm going to cut your taxes in half. I'm going to defund the police." You know, here's things that they theoretically could do, even if the likelihood is like, you know, less than 1%. This is like, it, it's, you know, it's a 0% chance and just makes us all look bad, right? Because they could come up here and try to cut our taxes in half, the other four might not allow it or, or it just doesn't work, or defund the police, or, you know, anything else that is in their sphere of influence, you know? Get rid of all zoning laws, right? Like, they could, they could campaign on that, and I would just roll my eyes and, and go, "Okay, good luck," right? But like, this is like, I don't know. Bugged me a little bit, and I just want to make sure we're in front of it. Because even, even if they're allowed to, I don't want us to, I don't know. I just don't want to set up those false expectations.
I'll just add, I think if, if the council's seeing a specific area that it doesn't feel like it's being messaged enough, like, please let us know. I mean, I know a lot's going out, but that doesn't necessarily mean all of our residents are going to see it. I think the other thing that's in our favor on this is that we have, this is a multi-year process. And so, in my mind, if this bond passes, then it is continuing to communicate with the county council and, and to our residents and making sure that at that point, our residents know, "We've stepped up to the plate, we've done our part, and now it's, it's on the county to prioritize us." And I think we'll have time to continue to try to communicate that much longer than just this November.
Right.
Matt, is there anything the city can do? You know, whenever, if someone makes a claim that is, as Councilmember Brown pointed out, is absolutely not possible for one elected Midvale City Councilmember to do, is it not appropriate for the city kind of, you know, without adding commentary, just saying like, "Fact-check"?
Like, community note.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, and I think, yes. And as far as it pertains to sort of the idea though of like attaching to, let's say someone uses social media in order to make a claim, are we going to link to that and say that, that's inaccurate or whatever? I mean, we don't really have a game plan on that. But I do think that we can focus on making sure that we have sort of non-directed messaging on issues where there are issues, sorry, that's not right. When there are, when someone brings up something that might not be accurate and that is sort of an administrative thing that we can say is, is not, you know, is, is not accurate. I mean, that's something we can communicate on. We don't really have a strategy and haven't had to in the past as part of it for how we would like directly respond. Garrett, do you have anything else you can add on there?
So, we have to play a very, very fine line. With the bond issue specifically and elections in general, the city can't come across as advocating or endorsing anything. So, what may appear to be a fact-check for one person of a particular viewpoint may look like advocacy for someone else. And so, from our perspective, it's a very, the city and its staff have a lot of limitations on it. To some extent, we rely heavily on our elected officials because you are not limited by those same things. If you are not using...
Yeah, I responded right away. I was like, "This is not how this works." But I just don't want people to think, you know...
But, but to have Laura out there being the Facebook police for the geo-bond or elections or things like that would probably be inappropriate for the city to, to play that role.
And, and that's what I'm saying, like, but if we can push out this argument, do the voter improvement, do those, or voter information pamphlet and those kinds of things, direct people to our website where we have educational information and all that. I mean, we can up that, but everything, I agree with everything that Garrett said.
And that was my initial point, is just getting out there with the education and, and the process and who decides, you know? We can, you know, there's plenty of people that will say, hey, if they know and see it enough, they will jump in and say, but if they don't know, they won't, you know?
Councilmember Brown, anything else?
That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, city manager Dahl.
Sure. First thing I just want to say is that, as one of my nerdy hobbits, hobbits?
Hobbits?
Hobbits. Hobbies is what I was going to say, is I've really taken up letter-writing. And one of the people that I've recently written a letter to was Mark Jansen, who was my high school government teacher, who was really the one who sort of gave me an in-depth education on the Constitution, how the government works, and really probably set me on my path to being city manager. And so, there's definitely still things that I think I remember that a lot of people don't about the Constitution because of the quality of the education that he provided. This summer, Councilman Brown had asked if we could do something for founding American Founders and Constitution Month. And I think that was a great suggestion, and I really appreciate that. And I think that, and I really appreciate what the Boys and Girls Club did for us this evening. It's an important thing that I think everyone should be educated on. And so, I think that was a really good thing that they helped us out with this evening. So, thanks again to the Boys and Girls Club and thank you, Councilmember Brown, for, for asking us to do that. With that, I'm not sure if any of you noticed on the way in, but we have a window that is boarded up out in the front lobby. There's actually several other windows that have been damaged and we have had people come out to give us quotes on repairing those. The situation would have been significantly worse if it had not been for Vendaleen, the planning director, who's sitting in the back, back there, who was here late one evening and saw the person doing it and was able to get them to stop. And actually, it was Vendaleen and his wife. So, both of you, thank you. But it could have been worse. And, and then also, we had several officers come in and help us with the situation as well. Anyway, so that's what happened. It was a vandal. Staff kept it from being worse, and so, thank you, and that's the story there.
Matt, was there any indication, you know, it's one thing to do that to a, a business on Main Street or something, but, you know, is there any indication that it was a targeted vandalism attack on City Hall for some reason or another? If you can discuss that, I know it might be under investigation, but just curious. Like, should we be looking for rocks right now being thrown at some point?
I, I guess I can't really speak to that.
Okay.
But it hasn't happened since.
Okay.
So, anyway, so that's the situation there. Then, the next thing I wanted to just let you know is that yesterday, we, with that microburst storm that we had, there was different areas where we didn't, where we had some standing water and things like that. Public Works was immediately out there assessing the situation throughout the city and just sort of reiterates the importance of the stormwater master plan that Glenn has been working on. We, that RFP recently closed, and we'll be moving forward with selection and we'll be getting going on that. That'll be a long-term project for us to improve the stormwater system throughout the city. But it is something that they're staying on top of and, and doing what they can as these situations present themselves. The next thing is that on Thursday, we will be closing on the bond for the water projects that we've been working on for a few months now. And even though she is out this week, I do just want to say that Mariah did fantastic work in getting all of the information that the underwriters and Bond Council and everyone needed in order for us to move forward with that. She put in a lot of hours, worked on weekends and that kind of stuff. In the same vein, I just also want to thank Garrett, Gilmore Bell, Louis Young, and Stiefel, other organizations that helped us out with this to get us over the finish line. I guess we haven't quite crossed the finish line, but we will in, in two days. The bond, when we sold it, was oversubscribed, which helped us get some additional funding for our projects as we changed terms to address that. And so, we're going to be in good shape to move forward with projects. And Public Works and Engineering will have a lot of things going forward. And thank you also for your support on that effort. The next thing is that this is an item that'll be coming up a little bit later. But there's been a lot of hard and long work and hours and things going into getting us ready to close on the deal for the court development. Clearly, you have some documents that you need to review later this evening. But I do want to make sure that I also thank not only, of course, the developers who have been working with us and are going to be the court partners, who are going to be building a, a great project on our Main Street. But I just want to also thank Cody, Maggie, Nate, Garrett for all the work that you guys have done in order to, to get us to this point. I know that sounds like I'm putting my finger on the scale for the eventual consideration of those items, but I did just want to point out that part of the reason that the documents have, have been gotten to you so late is really people have been working pretty non-stop on this for several weeks. And it's just everything we could do to try to get it to you guys this evening. And that's why that came late, and it took a lot of effort. And then finally, the mayor mentioned several of the upcoming events. And, but one of them, I hope you didn't mention, I didn't miss it, is that there will be a candidate forum for the council members or candidates for council district openings. That will be on October 4th at 7:00 PM. It will be moderated by Ben Winslow. And we have been started, Laura has put together and has been putting out the, the social media posts and things to inform people that that forum is going to be happening. And just wanted to make sure that it was something that was on your guys' calendar. That is all for me.
Let's see. I don't think I've ever heard you speak so much in your report.
We have all had.
Thanks for doing that. Well, I really messed up, and Rory, I didn't ask you to call roll. So, I think that we have to actually start from the beginning and run through everything that we've already done, so... Just kidding, we'll just... But Rory, if, if you would call roll, and then we'll move into consent.
Yes, Councilmember Sperry.
Yep, just got here.
Glover.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
And Gettle.
Been here.
Thank you. All right, move on to the consent agenda. We've just got one item, Consider Minutes of September 5th, 2023. It's their motion to accept the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion on that? Rory, will you call roll again?
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
And Sperry.
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. All right, moving on to our first action item, Consider Ordinance Number 2023012, prohibiting the negligent discharge of fireworks. We'll hear from Aaron.
Hello, City Council. Back here to have some discussion and action taken on the ordinance that I presented on two weeks ago regarding the negligent discharge of fireworks. Again, just for background, some council members wanted to prohibit the use of fireworks in, on city property. However, back in 2018, the state legislature passed a law prohibiting cities from creating any laws that prohibit the use of fireworks in specific locations and specifically restricted cities to city regulation of the use or discharge of fireworks. Um, and and specifically restricted cities to, uh, city regulation of the use or discharge of fireworks to, uh, outline the negligent discharge of fireworks. And so, um, we've, we've prepared, uh, an ordinance that does that. Um, it will allow prosecutors to, uh, pursue situations where someone starts something, someone else's property on fire because of fireworks, um, uh, as well as other negligent uses of it. And, um, I, uh, I brought tonight a little YouTube video of a, of a real life example where our prosecutor could, um, potentially address the issue, uh, just as an example. Maybe not real life, but a- any chance I get to play The Simpsons, I will.
Hey, be sure to kill something. Okay, now everybody, stand back while I celebrate freedom. Bart, give me your matches.
Fresh out.
No lighter? Nothing? Oh, wait. I got it. The beer!
Anyway, um, all, all joking aside, that's, that's the, uh, those are the sorts of things we're looking to avoid, uh, or or looking to, uh, enforce against. Um, do you have any questions or concerns or issues regarding this proposed ordinance?
Can I move that we watch the entire episode?
Second.
No.
I think it's great, you know, we, like I said, the last meeting, you know, we were trying to do one thing, um, that we were prohibited in doing and it looks like we came up with something that's actually even more helpful. So it's interesting kind of how that worked. So thank you for all the work that you did on this.
If something like that happens, is that a misdemeanor? Dope?
Uh, yes. That is a dope clink?
No.
All right, any other further discussion on this? They can be Simpsons related, but, uh, if not, ahead, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2023-012, adopting Midvale Municipal Code Section 8.06.280, negligent discharge of fireworks.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rory, we call roll?
Yes, Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
Sperry?
Aye, caramba, as Bart Simpson would say.
And Glover.
Aye.
Perfect.
Is this what you call the lame duck session for Quaid?
Uh, that passes. I was waiting to see if somebody would make some sort of joke as they do it. So Councilmember Sperry, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. All right, item B, Consider Resolution Number 2023-R38, to approve the acquisition of property and easement to support the installation of water lines and a water meter vault located at 6813 South 700 West and 6821 South 700 West in Midvale. Cody?
Thank you very much, mayor, and thank you, council. So this, uh, we're looking for just a little bit of property at the very, very north part of the city, right on the Murray border on, uh, 700 West. And, um, it is for the installation of a water line and a water vault meter. And we've worked with the property owner to kind of get the best configuration of this, um, water vault meter, uh, possible to disrupt his land as little as possible. Um, so there's a map and you can see that that property, that purple line is the border with Murray. So it's really, it's right on the border and, um, and so the property owner has already agreed and, uh, signed the, the, the necessary documentation for us to, uh, receive this property. It's two, uh, quitclaim deeds and it goes about from the far west of his property to the east, about thirty-two feet, um, for the street and then the sidewalk. And then on the northern parcel, another thirty feet for the easements. So it's one easement just on that north property and then two, um, deeds to the, basically just first thirty feet for the, the street. And then the compensation for the deeds to those property pieces and the easement is just the installation of sidewalk curb and gutter. So there's actually no, um, we're not paying him, um, directly for those. We're just gonna be installing sidewalk curb and gutter, uh, in front of his property on 700 West, uh, as compensation for that, um, property that he's dealing and, uh, granting us the easement for.
Is that the line they're putting in right now down there?
Correct, yeah. So they're working up in Murray right now and then they're about to come into.
Yeah, they're right there, it looks like.
Correct, and so. This is.
Where's the water? Is the water flowing into Midvale or out of Midvale?
Hopefully into Midvale.
Into Midvale.
Where are we getting the water from?
Jordan Valley. It's a, it's a connection on the west side for.
So yeah, if there's any questions, happy to address them. But as I said, the, this has all been worked out. We're really happy with the negotiations we've had with the property owner. They're happy, we're happy, and he's already signed, uh, the quitclaim deeds and the easement.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to suspend the rules and adopt Resolution Number 2023-R-38 to approve the acquisition of property and an easement to support the installation of water lines and a water meter vault located at 6813 South 700 West and 6821 South 700 West in Midvale.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rory, will you call roll?
Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
Sperry?
Aye.
Glover?
Aye.
And Robinson?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cody. All right, item C, Consider Resolution Number 2023-R39, authorizing the mayor to enter into an inter-local cooperation agreement with Salt Lake County relating to the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program and Emergency Solutions Grant Program.
Thank you, mayor. Um, if this feels a little like, uh, Groundhog Day, it should. This is a resolution that was, uh, passed by the council on June 20th. Um, what it, what it allows is the mayor to sign into an agreement of, with the CDPG grants, which is federal money that comes to the state and comes to the county and goes through a program where they allocate those funds to different projects throughout the county with, uh, different cities. Um, because three cities in this, in the county had grown by a certain population size. They had an option of rather being, than being in the program, they could get direct funding, um, a direct allocation. And so Harriman decided to do that. With that, um, the county has, uh, basically the state, not state, sorry, the federal government has required the county to redo, um, this agreement, excluding Harriman from there. And then they also added some language. This, this has a reoccurring, um, renewal on it that renews, I think, for up to fifty years. Um, but this, they, they added some language that if any of the participating cities, uh, withdraw, then that voids the inter-local agreement and all the cities have to re-sign the inter-local agreement. So with that, we're asking, um, the council to authorize the mayor to sign this new inter-local agreement, uh, that does not include Harriman City. Um, uh, every year we get several grants, um, from CDPG funds to do different things. Um, one to two, uh, projects that we, we typically get a year. So it's a great program and we're happy to work with the county on it.
Any questions or comments for Nate? I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2023-R39, authorizing the mayor to enter into an inter-local cooperation agreement with Salt Lake County related to the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program and Emergency Solutions Grant Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rory, we call roll?
Yes, Councilmember Gettle.
Yes.
Sperry.
Aye.
Glover?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
And Brown?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item D, Consideration of Resolution Number 2023-R40, approving an argument in support of the Rec- Recreation Bond for Inclusion in the 2023 Voter Information Pamphlet.
All right. Um, in July, uh, the city council approved a resolution, uh, establishing that we would have a, uh, special bond election, uh, for a recrea- recreation-related bond. Um, as part of the process, once that resolution was approved, we had to prepare, um, information that'll go in a voter information pamphlet. Um, the city is particularly, uh, responsible for putting together the pro statement, um, in, in favor of that bond. Um, we prepared the document, uh, Nate, uh, presented it to you, uh, at the last city council meeting. My understanding is there weren't, um, many comments, uh, on that. Subsequent to that, though, um, I have heard, um, as, uh, Councilmember Brown had brought up during his comments earlier, um, just some of that concern about not making it sound like, um, an approval of the bond, uh, will guarantee that we will get, um, Zap funding or any other of the funding sources that we could potentially, uh, set or, um, seek. Um, and so I just wanted to point out that not only is this essentially the same, uh, argument as last time, but in the second-to-last paragraph in the document, um, we do say that, um, even if the bond is passed, that that is not a, um, guarantee that we'll receive the matching funds necessary to build a rec center that, um, we're hoping that we'll be able to do. Um, so in, in an effort to try to address, um, those concerns. Um, and so with that, um, we are looking for you to approve, um, the argument this evening. One other thing I did want to mention is that if you so choose to approve the argument, uh, earlier during the workshop, I handed out an updated version of the resolution. Um, that resolution, um, I had a, uh, wrong citation for, um, the resolution that was approved in July. So I just needed to turn it to a thirty-two instead of a twenty-two. And then also Dustin caught that I had, um, uh, three or two number threes in the list and we got that changed. So appreciate you catching that and, um, that's the, the primary changes that were made, um, in that document. So if you so choose to approve the argument, then, um, uh, we would need you to identify in your motion, um, that you are approving the resolution that was handed out tonight and that will be reflected in the minutes, um, of this meeting as well as the rest of the motion. Is there any questions?
I just feel like when I see these questions, there's, uh, like a argument in support and argument in against. You said we only have to do it in support. So just for my understanding, who does the against?
Sure. So, um, we have, um, mentioned in previous meetings that, uh, there is the opportunity for, um, anyone to submit, um, something saying that they want to provide the against argument. Um, and then, um, typically what happens is, uh, we work with them to make sure that, um, whatever the argument they come up with, it meets the, um, the requirements. It's under five hundred words and all of that kind of stuff. But we have not had anyone submit to say that they want to do an against argument.
So, so I, I remember that. I didn't know if there was a bare minimum we had to do.
No.
Okay, so we only have to put one side in?
That's right.
But facilitate and, and help them meet the minimum standards or whatever, like, you know, or the whatever. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't like, we, you know, legally have to at least put something in.
Yeah, I think it's by the twenty-second, all arguments have to be submitted, uh, to the state. And we, like I said, we haven't received notice, but yes, you're right.
Okay.
If there are no other questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion.
As we all scramble to find it.
Sorry. The bottom.
Uh, mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2023-R40, as amended earlier this evening, approving an argument in support of the Recreation Bond for Inclusion in the 2023 Voter Information Packet.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Sorry, before you vote, was that sufficient, Garrett, to?
I'll do it again.
I included as amended earlier tonight.
Good. Okay.
Okay. All right, Rory, will you call roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sperry.
Aye.
Glover?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
And Gettle?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our, uh, first of two discussion items, Discuss Community Council Revitalization.
Last year, um, a, uh, there were community members that were interested in re-establishing the community council, um, for Midvale. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Robinson participated in those meetings, uh, some of those meetings with us and met throughout the fall. During that process, um, we, the primary thing was we were trying to see what they wanted to be in the future. I provided them with some options, um, ranging from being a, um, unofficial organization that just gets together from time to time, um, to the more sort of bureaucratically, um, uh, heavy one, which is like being a formal committee of the city, much like the Harvest Committee. Um, as those meetings went, the participation sort of dwindled. And the last thing that was sort of said in December was that there was a request that I would look into and provide more information on the, um, option of becoming a more formal, um, uh, committee of the city. Uh, admittedly, uh, after that discussion, I was the one who dropped the ball on following back up on that. Um, but, uh, earlier this summer, uh, the interest was sort of, uh, brought back up, um, both by the mayor and, and other folks of, how do we go about this? One of the concerns about the more formal, um, committee of the city is that, um, it might be seen as not providing that separation, um, that, uh, the community council has kind of had in the past. There would have to be a process for appointing the leadership and that kind of thing, um, uh, through the city council or by the mayor. And so one of the things that we've been thinking, um, is that maybe what we do is we start having less formal meetings. Um, we could do them, um, monthly or every couple of months to start off, where we just, um, put out a social media post, say that there's gonna be an opportunity for the community to get together, talk about their issues, there'll be a presentation, um, by some staff members. Maybe we invite a council member and the mayor, that kind of thing, and continue those for a while to create a different venue where people can participate that's less formal. Um, and maybe, you know, maybe it's at a different time of day or something to accommodate people who don't normally come to the city council meetings. And the hope would be that through that process, um, we might be able to get that critical mass of people who are interested in being in the community council and that they could then start up that process again of looking at how they want to be formed, um, rather than us just sort of saying, you're gonna be a committee of the city. Um, and so the question for you tonight is, is that something you think would be an appropriate approach? Would be to sort of start having these, um, informal meetings, uh, where we provide information, provide a forum for the community to, um, talk about their issues and then sort of move towards a more formal community council out of that group? Or is there a different approach that you would like us to look at doing in order to try to reinvigorate, um, the community council?
Thank, um, thank you, Matt, for starting that discussion. Um, I just wanted to note, you know, I was the liaison to the community council for three years. So I saw when it worked great and I saw when it fell into decline. And one of my fondest memories, um, at being a council member is a potluck Christmas, um, event that we had with the community council with, um, holiday music playing and gifts and, and such. Um, so there, I think there's great value in having it as far as like actually getting together as a community and having events where you can talk to someone in a very informal setting and actually get to know them outside of, you know, us being council members or you being the city manager. So I think there is great value in having a community council. Um, w- one thing I would say from my experience is that when it was, when it became a more formal, like, I move to do this, second, let's call a vote. Let's, um, let's make sure that we have, you know, proper minutes and there was a, a Robert's Rules of Order training going on. Like, we don't even have that as council members. So I would, um, you know, it's. So I would, you know, it's, it's great to give them the the option to like, hey, you can form the way you want. But, you know, it would behoove us to allow them to reform in a way that has been highly unsuccessful. So I would, if we could, just stress that, you know, we don't, we don't want you to organize as, you know, a Roberts Rules of Order body. Because I don't, I think, you know, a lot of people in the community who came to those events started to leave because they didn't, that's not what they came to do. You know, they came to, you know, help out with issues in the city that, you know, beautification committee, for one thing, is what is always mentioned. And, and, you know, they may have had the Roberts Rules of Order training, but they never did that beautification committee, which is the one thing that people said for multiple years that they wanted that community council to do. So I don't think that we should have an entirely hands-off and say, you know, you guys get together and figure out how you want to organize. I think we should do as much as we can to stress the informality of a community council revitalization.
Well, just a couple of comments on what you were just saying to just clarify too is the, some of where the challenges come in is this thing of if, for example, they want to do something with money that we have any sort of relationship. So if they form as a totally as a nonprofit, totally separate from us, we just agree that we'll participate in their meetings or whatever, then, you know, then they're responsible for figuring out how they're, they're going to do that. If they become a formal committee where we're going to be making formal, like requests of them or, you know, that kind of stuff, then there are legal requirements of what they're going to do. And that plays into, you know, what should they be and all of that. And so, I mean, I think there's probably is a sweet spot where they can sort of do things. We don't have expectations of anything they're going to do that's like, requires them to utilize city funds or, you know, or whatever. But maybe we can ask them to weigh in on some things from time to time. But that's the way that you would keep it from needing to be a real formal minutes organization and all that kind of stuff. And that's the balancing that I think was sort of the struggle last fall is, you know, I think they wanted to be part of us, but not necessarily have to go through all the bureaucracy of us too. And anyway, but I hear what you're saying. And I think that maybe that's how this approach goes to again is if we start with these less formal meetings with the goal of trying to find that group that we then work with, like you said, not hands-off, but like work with them to try to come up with what that final form is, I think that's probably a good idea.
I would be supportive of, you know, whatever comes out of it. And I think it is nice for council to participate in that as well. Cause just in my experience, they tend to have a ton of questions about, you know, what's going on as far as city management and administration goes. So, you know, that could be the more formal aspect of it that we attend. And, you know, we sometimes, you know, they might have you as the guest speaker or, you know, those could go into the wee hours of the morning if they do, but.
I know we could, there's more discussion from the other council members about how to sort of reboot this. But if we're sort of, if we are, I don't know, we are in line with what Dustin is saying, maybe it's something where as we have these meetings, we would have two of you attend at a time so we don't hit quorum and invite at least two of you at a time so that we don't hit quorum and then make sure we participate in that way.
So I, I thought a lot about this. You know, it makes me a little sad as someone posted on Facebook like, hey, you know, like, and they tagged me and Dustin like, what, like, what are you guys doing? What are you discussing? And I instantly responded, the community council should be community driven, so you need to come and tell us, right? Like, come on Tuesday and tell us. And, and no one's here, so it makes me nervous that there won't be, you know, anyone to, to drive, to drive it. So, you know, like, I don't know if we're already setting up for failure or if no one's interested already.
They could be watching online.
They could be, right? And, and some of that could be us where, for instance, there was a young man that came that lives over by me that, you know, we need to take their, we need to take people's information that comes in that, that we think would be interested to engage them, right? Like, reach out to that young man and be like, hey, you seem like, you know, you'd be interested, you know, come by. We definitely should not have them be a separate nonprofit, you know? Having one with the Arts Council, we're very fortunate that Stephanie knows what she's doing on the accounting side to keep them out of trouble. It's so much work, right, to, to make sure you comply with the, you know, all the requirements for nonprofits. So for something that's little, that may or may not have funding, I don't think that's worth it. I do think we should set some, some sort of expectation up. I know, like, it could be light. What I would say is, hey, this is what we want. You could do everything else you want, but, you know, initially, people want a beautification committee. That means, you know, in each district, once a quarter, you give out twenty-five dollar gift card and, and you buy one of those, you know, plat, you know, like essentially a sign that you have for, you know, the politics signs. But instead it's like, you know, you know, this one, this house won, you know, beautification award for, you know, and they go and they stick it on that yard, give the house a twenty-five dollar gift card. Like, if, we all say we want a beautification committee, but I, I don't think someone has to tell them what that means, what that looks like, and then be like, go. You know, otherwise we just hear it. It's kind of like when people put on Facebook, I heard gunshots. It's like, call the police. If you hear, like, putting it on Facebook does literally nothing, right? And so everyone just sort of throws things out there. So I think that's one thing we have to do is, is tell them. And I just, that was just something I thought, twenty-five bucks, once a quarter with a sign. That would be cool. And then you try to tell them not to repeat, you know, often or whatever, right? Another thing we could do is something like, here is a grand in the spring and a grand in the fall or whatever. And, and it's not a lot of money, but you can sponsor like a movie in the park at the beginning of this, you know, in spring, right when the parks are opening, in the fall, right when parks are closing. And, and then you can, you know, you guys are in charge of that, but, but like, here's a way, you know, that's sort of what a community council is to me is like engaging the citizenship. But, so if we give them like those two things and say, you can do a lot more things, go figure that out, research what other places are doing, you know, by all means do that. But here, you know, from the city, this is our, this is what we've heard, our people, what people want. Here, here's how we suggest you do that. And, and then they can morph that and they don't even have to always do that. But I, I, I just think if we're like, here is a community council, we'll show up, whatever. But if there's not like, you know, like I was saying, those like examples, I, I just think it kind of sets them up for failure. And then if they get bogged down with, well, first, let's tell you how to make a motion, you know, like that, that's just procedural stuff and that sort of form over substance, and I'm not a big fan of that. So those are my ideas I've had since someone asked. I don't know if anyone else is interested in that. And, and I'm going to start telling you, oh, you know, Matt's like, great, here's like one more thing the city has to do. I'm saying like, here's a piece of paper that tells them, this is what we sort of expect. And then the next year, we ask them if they did it, not necessarily like, you guys have to like, you know, you have to all go and you have to make sure it's being done correctly. It's sort of like, okay, you know, take pictures of the place, put the signs on so we know that, you know, there's five a quarter.
Matt, right, well, they could be highlighted in the journal.
Yeah, something like that.
The thing will work out and I hear you, but is sort of the challenge of giving like a loosely formed group like money, right? So like what it would have to be is, I mean, we'd have to figure that out. But I imagine it would be something where it's more like, it's an administrative.
It's almost like an advisory. They can come and say, here's who we recommend. And then, I mean, the city staff is the one who actually recognizes.
I mean, they could hold the, the city could hold the gift cards. They could come to you and say, we want to put it on there. And you can give them the gift card to put it on or something like that, right? Which is still giving them money, I guess, you know, like the, the, you know, the movie in the park, something similar where it's like, we rent the, the screen, right? And, and so it's like, we don't really give them money. We just sort of do this very small, minimal support. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, to like Quinn is saying, I mean, in that scenario, what I'm envisioning, and I don't know if, what, I can't read Garrett's mind, but, but I, but, no, you don't have, jump in, but I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, how about that? But is that like, really what we're describing is something that would be an administrative project where we seek advice from a community group on it?
I'll give, I'll give Garrett a moment to think longer. I mean, you may not know the answer. I, I would, and so it may be a future meeting. You had mentioned if we set them up as like a separate subcommittee or, you know, part of the city, there's some legal requirements. I'd like to know what that is. Maybe you know now or maybe you got to fill this in later.
So what Matt is alluding to is the Open Public Meetings Act. So everything we've, we, from what I'm hearing from everyone, was we have kind of two conflicting interests. We want it to be informal, but on the other hand, we want to give them certain responsibilities. But the Open Public Meetings Act says if we give them certain responsibilities, they have to have an agenda, they have to have minutes, they have to be open to the public, those have to be noticed, which are a lot of formal things. And so I think that's what Matt's getting at is we can try and be creative to keep it informal, but to give them a certain amount of autonomy comes with the cost of making things formal. So, so we can come back with some options, but that's, that's what we're buddying up against. The state law says if they're expending funds, if they're making certain types of decisions, it has to be an open public meeting. On the flip side, if we want to make it informal, we will have to retain certain control of certain things at the city level.
And I'm not opposed to the meetings being open. I mean, I don't, I don't want to put a lot of administrative burden on our recorder or other employees. I mean, I look at it, I know years ago, and Paul, maybe you can comment, they, they used to be part of the city. Once I came on the council, it had already been split off. And I remember one of my responsibilities, I was like the liaison, right? I think a lot of the new council members that was there. And I remember going and then talking to Kane and then Mayor Seguin, like, what is the point of this thing? My dad was on it and I did saying, what is the point of this council?
Your dad was like the most active member.
Well, and he would talk about, I mean, he was like, well, I mean, when I would ask him like, what's the point? He's like, well, we do breakfast to harvest days, which they don't even do. So.
Which people miss, which people miss.
Yeah, but, but like, that was like the one thing, like, what do you do the rest of the year? He's like, uh, I'm still trying to figure some of that out, right? I mean, that's where my words not is, but it, it was, I mean, it, it lacked direction. When you talk about they were doing a training on Roberts Rules of Order, I mean, the reason they had to have that training is because it was so dysfunctional, people were coming and yelling at each other and getting angry. And so they were trying to bring order to the chaos. And it was awful. And so, yeah, and I, there were plenty of people that, I mean, it changed. And as I was there, people would leave who'd been a long tenure and I'm like, why are you leaving? Like, because so-and-so's on here and has his or her personal agenda and I'm just sick of listening to it every, every month.
Yeah, it got very, very contentious and uncomfortable for a while. So, you know, myself included, just a lot of us just stopped coming because, you know, who wants to welcome that type of drama into their evening?
Well, and I know I chaired with the mayor, and I don't remember who else I was talking to in that meeting, maybe it was Nate. I mean, I was at one of the meetings, they were inviting groups from out of our community to come and talk about their, and I was like, invite groups from our community here. I mean, that's what it's for. And, but you had other groups from out of the community coming to them and asking for money. And I was like, why are you even holding this meeting right now? So I, that's, that's my concern is if it's separate, it's going to turn into that again. And I would rather have them part of the city where we can give them some direction. And, and then, you know, I think bring them in. They are part of Harvest Days, they're part of, I mean, we have the concerts in the park and all these other things. I mean, they can, part of that can be building the awareness in the community of those things.
I know not everyone has weighed in yet, but what I'm hearing now so far would be maybe we start off with these less formal meetings with an agenda, we, we set the agenda, providing, making sure we're always providing an opportunity for them to talk about whatever it is they want to talk about. But then in addition to that, we tell them that the goal of this is to get to the point of where there will be a beautification committee and that there will be, we'll look for them to be sort of core volunteers for our activities that are coming up as far as Harvest Days and whether that turns back into the breakfast. But that, you know, yes, we're going to meet, yes, you could talk about the issues on your mind, but we're moving towards having enough people that are interested and willing to form, to really form that committee to do these things. We work with them, but that in the end, I know there's a little bit of difference here, but I don't know if you've sort of changed your mind, but that we do move towards that, making them the formal group so that we can, when they are doing those formal functions, we can give them the twenty-five dollar gift cards or whatever that is to hand out and they can make those decisions. It'll come with some of that bureaucracy, but maybe if the difference is, is that we're guiding that as opposed to it being self, I, I'm trying to put the pieces together on that.
And as you create it, maybe define government-y so we know.
That's my word.
I think Paul wants to make a comment.
I've been on, and we used to have a committee on the east side and the west side. And I've seen really good meetings and I've seen crappy meetings. And I just think that they, we, if they're going to have a committee, they need, it needs to be a service committee. They're giving service back to Midvale and they're doing stuff to improve Midvale, like the beautification or whatever. That's where you're going to get them involved and they're going to feel good about it. Instead of having a committee that's just going to gripe. And, I mean, I want to hear if they want us to do stuff, but most of the meetings, I'm like Quinn, it's like, this, why did I come? And I did it for years and years and years. So I just think service is the way to go. And if we can, if we can help them with a little, some incentives like the beautification or whatever, that's great. The other problem is, is you have to get somebody that really, two or three people that really want to make it work and are going to spend some time doing it. Otherwise it just falls apart and it's, it's gone.
And that's the thing that's been really successful with the Harvest Committee is that we started off with four people that have stuck with it for two years and have been, put in a lot of time.
They want to do it, they, they feel like that they're helping Midvale and it's something, and again, it comes back to service. They want to make Midvale better. If we can have a committee that that's their goal, then I think they'll get other people to join them and they'll want to do it. But if it's just a meeting that they got to come and listen to the Robert rules, it's probably not going to last very long.
Well, and I think you tied, I mean, our meeting started with the, you know, recognizing, am I going to get the name Michaela Pendick? Right, for her, you know, covering up or cleaning up the graffiti. I mean, that's one, I mean, UPD's already got that group, but you could also, you know, get volunteers to kind of work with UPD on that and say, we're going to, that's one of the things we're going to go do, right? Whether that is, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if we have to have our, our own, but, but it's something where they're doing service. Same thing, cleaning up the Jordan River. I mean, there's, there's the Jordan River Commission, but there's plenty of things we can do. I'm sure Public Works may say, I get a group, they'll help, you know, clean up the cemetery before Memorial Day, right? Some of those things. So I think there's plenty of service opportunities that we can look at in the city and we don't have to just sit around and get trained on Robert's rules.
So I, I was trying to be sort of diplomatic by saying I don't want a complaining committee again. That's why I said if we just, I, I don't know, I understand what Garrett's saying. I just, I just feel like that's what it'll devolve into if they don't have direction.
Right.
And, and how do we do that without having to do too much, you know? Cause again, I don't want to just make another council where you have to figure out the agendas and everything. But if they have service, if they have services that they know that they need to provide, like the beautification committee or, or whatever pancakes, you know, it will give them something that occupies their time as well. So, you know, even if there are things that they do, you know, want to, you know, voice their concerns or whatever, they can and will. But, but if, if there's nothing, then, then that's just what it turns into.
So the big thing that I'm hearing across the group right now, I mean, is that the primary, sorry. When I was, I, I wasn't sure exactly where your, where your guys' goals were going to lie. So when I was coming to this, I wasn't sure if it was how much importance it was to there being a separate forum that's just different than here, that people would have opportunities to sort of voice things. But what I'm hearing is universally, it sounds like, is really, whatever this is, it needs to be a directed service committee and not, we're not just supporting their, just, they can have, they can have a forum, but it's not about that forum, right? I could say that a different way, Dustin, if that.
Please do.
I mean, I think, I think another reason it's good to have them under the city is, I think, Paul, you and I were probably the only ones when Topgolf was coming in, because I remember there was somebody on the committee who called Topgolf's headquarters and said, I'm so, I'm like the chair on this Midvale Community Council, we don't want you. I'm so, I'm like the chair on this Midvale Community Council, we don't want you. And it was like, you have nothing to do with the city, don't put yourself out there as if you have some power in the city. But, so I think if they're under the city, that could also help.
I'm going to just weigh in really quick because we're moving really fast. Um, I haven't yet actually seen a fully functioning community council because right as I was the liaison, then COVID hit, so, and I don't think it ever really recovered after that.
Right.
You're assuming that was something we saw years ago.
Yeah, we.
I mean, Paul said there were some good times.
I did it for three years.
We had some good community councils, but it didn't last forever.
Yeah, and that's, so I, I like the idea of maybe a little informal, working towards a goal, being service oriented, I really like that a lot. My fear is if we roll out with it's going to be formal right out the gate, we're just going to be doing what we have been doing for the last little while. I don't know how long it was before I came along, and I fear it's just going to fail. So I think maybe informal to get people interested and then give them some goals to meet. And one of that being that eventually it will become a division of the city or a, a council connected to the city just so that we can work out some funding and stuff with them and give them better direction because the, the four years I've spent in there, that is the issue, is there is no direction. So.
When you come back to us with this, Matt, can you give us an idea of what it might look like if the community council were an entirely independent functioning organization? Um, because I think there is some merit to that. It would take the right people in the right places to pull that off, but, you know, we're not the only city in Utah that has a community council and they function very differently in different cities. Like Salt Lake City, I think, has seven different community councils, yeah. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We, I think, just need to look at our options and then hopefully choose the best one. Um, one thing I did want to mention, you know, when I was a, a member of the community council and the liaison, there was money that, you know, there was a bank account that the community council had money in. I don't know if it, I don't think it's a lot of money, but it's more than nothing. So I think it would be fiscally wise to maybe try to figure out who is the person who can access that money. And if they don't need it right now, we could probably allocate that to better resources. So that's just an aside that I was reminded of during this conversation, that there's money out there, it might be a couple of hundred dollars, it might be a thousand dollars.
And that's one of the issues with that fully separate organization is that they had to, in order to be able to hold money, they had to re- register, keep registering, uh, file tax-related forms and do some stuff like that. And when the organization is fully functional, then that's getting done. And then when it goes defunct, then it runs into some issues regarding that. And so, um, I'm not, I mean, we, yes, we'll look at those, those different ways, but that is one of those issues is that if they're a part of us and there's money, then we still have control over how some of that works and the reporting and goes through, you know, our procurement and all that other kind of stuff. And, but if then they're separate, then whenever they go back into the, assuming that it continues to sort of go in waves, then it becomes a problem where there's not um, capable people to be able to manage those dollars. How does this sound?
Good.
Yes.
Second.
What if we, I'm not sure when, but we, uh, like October sometime or it, I haven't thought about this with regards to when we're doing all the bond stuff and all that, but this, this year, hold a, an event, I don't know, we'll call it an open house or something, where we'll look at providing information to the people that attend and all that kind of stuff. And then as part of that, try to see if we can identify people that are really interested in continuing to participate. So a less formal meeting. And then from there, maybe we have some questions that we go through, surveys or whatever, whoever we get to attend that, where we ask them questions that might be able to help us put together a, 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 a package to bring back to you, always with the idea though, that in the end, it's about service. Is that right?
I think that's.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, definitely, we can, then we can see if there's any real interest in. If there's no interest with the community, then it's.
Right. What's the point?
The people, the people who ask us as council members, you know, hey, I'm not interested in running for a position ever, is there anything else I can do in Midvale? And right now, we don't have a lot of arts council maybe, um, but we don't have any sort of city adjacent organizations to point them to. And I think people want to do something of service rather than do something of Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay. Then I will proceed in that way.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Matt.
That's a lot of notes. You're up next, so don't worry.
This was my second one. Yeah, now it's Glenn.
Yep. Item B, discussion regarding a curfew to be set by ordinance for all city parks. Glenn?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Let's see. Okay, uh, so some quick background here. Um, over the past few years, there has been a significant increase in vandalism, graffiti and other various criminal activities within the park. Um, these are the G-rated pictures for reference. Okay, I left out, the, the next slide will be really good. Kidding, Matt.
For what's worth, I hadn't seen this slide.
If you had showed us this before the community council, we would have different ideas of what they could do.
Right, uh, for reference, the, the one under the sink is a fire. It's not as disgusting as you might think, but, uh, currently there is no enforceable curfew for our parks. Uh, so staff is proposing a curfew to help curb some of these activities and to assist Unified PD in their patrol and enforcement efforts. Um, currently, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but if, if you were to go to the park at eleven o'clock at night and if they're not committing a crime, you know, they're, you just kind of have to wash your hands and leave. Okay. So we're, we're trying to remedy that. Uh, the proposed seasonal curfew, uh, would be between April, uh, between April first and September thirtieth, park hours would be six AM to ten PM. Uh, this allows for both early and late park use, you know, for those exercising and whatnot during the warmer season. And also coincides with, uh, restroom access. And then between October first and March thirty-first of the following year, park hours are from official sunrise to official sunset and we will post a table on the website. Uh, and this coincides with the winterizing and de-winterizing of the restrooms um, and prohibits anyone from being in the park during, you know, dark hours. This is the, the actual proposed ordinance in, in Garrett's language, legalese. Uh, the only thing of note here would be that it is a classy misdemeanor. Um, so with, I'd just like to have a, a quick discussion, see if you're comfortable with the hours, see if you're comfortable with the penalties and any other thoughts, questions or suggestions.
It seems like a no-brainer to me to have a curfew. I mean, I, I think most of the other parks do, right? I know I've been there.
Yeah.
You know it's closing and you have to leave, so that's fine.
I ha- I have noticed however, um, in West Jordan in particular, their parks say they close at ten PM and it's not.
Seasonal.
It's ten PM. And I personally like that approach better, um, just because, you know, it gets, in, in the dead of winter, it's dark by the time most people are off work. So five PM, it could be dark out. That, I don't think that's necessarily a time where we should say, no, you can't go to our city parks at five PM with your kids after work. So, um, I would like to see that be later, eight PM or just do like a ten PM across the board.
Okay.
I, I like the idea. I do think it could have a negative impact, uh, from what we were hearing today. Um, you know, how Operation Rio Grande sort of went, right? So if a bunch of, I would assume a lot of, of people that are, you know, without homes probably congregate there at one point at night, they could end up in, you know, front of businesses at night or behind businesses or in people's sheds because we've pushed them out of this area, which could bring other, you know, that the property crime could, the people committing property crime might not be homeless people, right? But they will be, you know, scared to, to congregate there and, and they're going to find a new place, right? So I think it's a good idea. I do, I'm worried that, well, we could unintentionally have an unintended consequence where all of a sudden, you know, they scatter and now they're in people's, you know, backyard sheds or whatever to try to stay warm or, or just find a place to lay down and, you know, where a lot of these other cities don't have homeless shelters, right? So it's not, not necessarily always the same.
I'm not really concerned about that because, I mean, I don't think we want to have them all in there at regular times anyway. And, I mean, people won't want to go to the park if that's, if, if that's what you see congregating there. So I don't.
Well, it's usually at night.
I, 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 I understand your concern. Um, and I, I would add that, uh, staff is trying to curb some of the issues with those folks in the park with this, um, but I do understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm not saying to not do it, I just think, we, you know, we could see an uptick in phone calls of like, hey, now there's more. Those people especially, there's like, we got to figure this out. There, there's a gap between the homes and the freeway. You know, so where Adam Street Park is, where that park ends to about the frontage, to about the cemetery, there's a ten to fifty-foot wide no man's land that, that no one takes care of, where I've heard homeless people will go and then when it's really cold, if there's a shop or something, they'll, you punch a hole in that wall or something and, and go in. But, you know, so I could see that, that area just all of a sudden becoming, well, that's not a park. Who owns that? Like, you know, UDOT's not going to come and patrol that, right? Like, I don't know why they didn't give the property owners all the way, you know, like just an easement. Like you can build your fence all the way to the wall, but we own, you know, but this is ours if we need it. Because, I don't know if you've seen it, sometimes that, 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 you know, because they tore a bunch of homes down, but they didn't need it all, especially right when you're by the cemetery and you look down, it's just a weed field that's about twenty feet wide. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I do, yeah. We've had actually A to Z, um, keeping the weeds down this year, which is something we haven't done in the past, but yeah, I'm very familiar with the area.
And it does look, you know, better if you can use that term, it's like ten-foot Russian thistle. But I can just see like those areas all of a sudden getting, you know, flooded and then, then like, you know, who's in charge of that?
Okay. So, so overall, oh, sorry, go ahead, Dustin.
One other thing, um, we do, not to go back to fireworks, but, um, we just passed an ordinance saying that we couldn't prohibit people from lighting fireworks in public parks, city-owned property. So if we would do this, we would be, that would be like an end around of saying like, well, we're not going to cite you for being here shooting off fireworks, but you weren't supposed to be here after ten PM, so get in the back of this car.
And that kind of leads into, uh, we need to create a specific park section in the code. Um, this is the first, first item that's, uh, staff feels important to get passed, but there will be more coming.
I have a quick random question. The lights, what time do our lights currently turn off?
Ten, ten o'clock, because we have them set for the pickleball players.
Thank you.
Those would, if we adjust the curfew, um, seasonally, we would adjust the lights to coincide with the curfew.
Thank you.
And in the, the parks like Bingham Junction Park, there's a track that runs around the perimeter. Again, you know, myself included, whenever I'm done working at four-thirty or five o'clock, I go outside to walk. And it doesn't seem right to me that, you know, using that track at five or six PM in winter time when it's dark would technically be a misdemeanor.
So, so I, what I'm hearing is you, you're, we're comfortable with the curfew. We just need it either adjusted later for the seasonal or, uh, standard year round.
I, I like a standard year round number just so people, just know. For, you know, the cops know, the people know, everyone knows. They don't have to guess, oh, it's May first, I can now be here an extra thirty minutes.
Is that so? Am I hearing then that our curfew should be six AM to ten PM year round?
I, yeah, I like that.
I think so.
Probably the other way.
How do I say it?
Yeah, so you, you, you could be at the park from ten PM to six AM.
We can be there from six AM to ten PM. That's what I meant.
So if we do this, can we try to really hard and make sure those sprinklers only run during that, that curfew time?
Yes, during the day.
Yeah, right, right, so it's like.
We al- we al- we already effort that, but yes, yes.
Okay, cool. That was, I, sometimes people complain about that, so.
Okay.
I, I have some reservations about it. I understand the importance to have a curfew, but there are just so many, like I'm already thinking of all these what-if scenarios, like what if there's a snowstorm at ten PM and someone wants to take their kid out to the park to throw snowballs? Are we going to arrest them?
Well, in Harvest Days, everyone goes to the park for the fireworks and it's later than ten. So that one's a weird one.
We'll go back. Sorry. It, there is an exception for, uh, participating in city permitted events.
So if someone did movie in the park that we.
That's fine, yeah. City, city permitted, uh, events are excluded from the curfew.
They'd have to contact someone here to sort of.
Yeah. Go through the city permit process for that.
I think we should do it, see how it works. If there are people lining out the door here telling us that it's awful, uh, then maybe we can.
Then we'll adjust.
Readdress it.
Okay. Uh, we will bring back a new ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Glover, would you like to do the honors?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Some motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned. Do we need a two-minute break or jump right into it?
Let's jump in.
Jump into it.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. Uh, it's eight forty-four PM. I'll call this meeting to order. Rory, if you would call roll, please.
Yes, Board Member Robinson.
I, or here, sorry.
Glover.
Here.
Gettle.
Here.
Sperry.
Here.
And Brown.
Present.
Thank you. All right, move into public comments. Any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for public hearing on the agenda tonight may address the Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City Board at this point by stepping to the microphone and giving their name for the record. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, uh, we'll move to the consent agenda, just one item, consider minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
May I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Rory, will you call roll?
Yes, Board Member Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Say here.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Sperry.
Aye.
And Robinson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Uh, we got four action items tonight.
You're done.
For item A, consider resolution number twenty twenty-three, eleven RDA, approving a first amended and restated service agreement between the Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City and Neighbor Works Salt Lake to administer revised housing programs. We're going to hear from Maggie.
Good evening to all of you. Um, we are at the last step before launching our down payment assistance and our home repair loan program. Thank you for all your work on this and your support, Garrett. Thank you and the legal team and the RDA and the community development team. It's been quite a road, but here we are. So, um, I've just given a brief history of, of where we've been and where we are. And today we're hopefully approving the, um, amendments to the service agreement as well as the refined down payment assistance and home repair loan program. And then on October second, we can launch them. The updates to the service agreement, um, include, um, extending the requirement for the cyber insurance, cybersecurity insurance. It's now required at year two before we renew our contract with, um, Neighbor Works in twenty twenty-five. Um, additionally, we added the CDBG funding that is going to be, um, you know, tentative, tentatively, um, awarded to the RDA. Um, I'll be bringing that contract to you in the coming weeks. Um, that will be supporting the home repair loan program. Um, additionally, I sent you all an email today. There was a last-minute update to the agreement title to coincide with, um, um, the fact that it's a first amended and, um, restated agreement as well as recitals just describing, um, the, the history of where we've, um, of, of the agreement. Um, so updates to the down payment assistant, um, uh, program. As you may remember, we contr- approved a contract service agreement with Neighbor Works the last time I came before you. Um, part of that was they were going to take these programs back with them and provide suggestions for updates. Part of that was they were going to take these programs back with them and provide suggestions for updates based on their experience and expertise. So their suggestions, which the R D A is supportive, is supportive of, are in increasing the D P A assistance, down payment assistance from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand per loan. And then the assistance for Midvale residents or employees of a public entity operating within Midvale from twenty-five to thirty thousand. We've also added that there will be deed restrictions applied and down payment assistant process is now included. Oh, sorry, I was like, what is? The Neighbor Works has also, when people are approved, so that's also included in the in the new program document as well as, oh, Neighbor Works policies and procedures. So updates to the home repair loan program include all of the loans are forgivable after five years. So there's a twenty percent reduction each year. Previously, it was the only forgivable loan was a five thousand dollar loan for households owned or in the fifty percent A M I level and below. And the rest were up to fifteen thousand, but they were to be paid back with low interest rates. Neighbor Works, they'll be coming up here to describe a little bit further of why this is their suggestion. But basically, they've had money from the county to provide similar pro, a similar program as we're offering, and nobody's taking it. It's a big loan to take on, especially if you're sixty percent A M I household. You know, taking on a fifteen thousand dollar loan is like buying a new car. And for those who have, that qualify for the forgivable five thousand dollar loan, a fifty percent A M I, let's say the roof, new roof, costs ten thousand dollars, taking on a five thousand dollar loan is cost prohibitive for many of those families as well. So additionally, there's been an update from a low interest loan to a zero interest. And another thing that is not required now is that there be code deficiencies to qualify for assistance. It was brought to our attention, let's say someone needs a new roof, but it's not out of code, then they wouldn't qualify for assistance. So we've removed that, that is not a common requirement. We've also updated it to include deed restrictions for the lifetime of the loan. And again, the new program process and policies are now included in the program document. The total administrative costs have lowered. It was about fifty thousand down to thirty-two, and this is because with the forgivable or with the home repair loan grants, those don't require loan processing fees and setup fees. So we're gonna be saving a lot of administrative costs on that. Additionally, the C D B funds will cover about twenty-five thousand dollars of those costs. The home repair loan program, we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand for that and an additional seventy-five thousand will be added from the C D B G funds. And for the D P A, it's down payment assistance about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I would, before we move on to this recommended motion, I would like to introduce you to Maria Garcia. She is the C E O of Neighbor Works. And I also want to introduce you to Tony Simone, who's the Director of Home Ownership and Services. And he's actually gonna come up here and talk to you all about these recommendations. And then he can answer a lot of the questions you have, probably in a little bit more detail. So Tony, do you want to come up here?
Maria, would you like to come up as as well? I don't know if it's needed, but if if you'd like to.
All right, thank you. As Maggie said, my name is Tony Simone. I'm the Director of Home Ownership Services for Neighbor Works Salt Lake. And thank you very much for us to be here tonight and approving the contract and the R F P previously for us. The recommendations we had comes from the experience we have over close to forty-five years of helping communities throughout the valley, mainly in Salt Lake City, and the communities that you're trying to help with the down payment assistance and the home improvement grants. And one of the recommendations that we provided or suggestion was changing a loan with an interest rate to a forgivable loan. I mean, the community of people we're trying to serve can't really afford another payment. And from our experience over the years in other cities that we work with, a forgivable loan with no payment, no interest rate over a five year period really helps the community of people that we're trying to serve. So that was sort of the basis of the found, in the foundation of the suggestions that we made to the original contract. And each one of those suggestions kind of flows from there. Again, looking at the people that we're trying to help when it comes to the home improvement loans instead of a payment loan, a forgivable loan over a five year period. So keep someone in the home, which is what we want. Doesn't add a burden to their financial situation because, you know, we're at an eighty percent of A M I type of home. So again, this is just adding a burden to them. The other suggestion was the code deficiencies, you know, I think the original contract had us, there had to be some codes, and we're not code enforcers. We always look to health and safety. Those are the, you know, the recommendations. When we go out to look at a home, our Director of Real Estate goes out, looks at the home and what the homeowner would like to do, and our priority is the health and safety issue. So if there's electrical, there's plumbing, and there's roofs, there's windows, or whatever it might be, those are the the issues that we're gonna look at when we go out to look at the home. And then we go from there, so. And then we also suggested we increase, when it comes to the down payment assistance, as many of you know, homes in Midvale have increased dramatically as they have everywhere. Median price home is about four hundred, four hundred and eighty thousand to four hundred and ninety thousand dollars right now. So again, we're trying to help people and people purchase homes in Midvale. And so we have suggested, again, increasing that down payment assistance up a little bit from twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. Gives a little bit more assistance to each individual. And just as a suggestion, you know, I ran a few numbers prior to coming here. And, you know, today's market, interest rates are six and a half to seven percent. And if you have a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan at six and a half percent, that payment is two thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars a month. And that is a debt to income ratio of forty percent with just the mortgage payment with a family of four at the eighty percent A M I type of income. So that's why, again, we suggested moving that down payment number up a little bit because bringing that loan number hopefully down a little bit. There's nothing we can do about interest rates, but we can provide a little bit more assistance to help. Again, we want to get people into homes and the community that we're serving this extra five thousand dollars will help in saying with the either city employees or, I guess, if it's county employees that are working within Midvale as well, increasing that number up from twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars, so. I think that's about it.
Maria, I don't know if you'd like to add anything, you're welcome to.
Tony obviously does such a great job, that's why I send him here. But thank you for the opportunity. I I would say a couple of things. One, when we do the inspections, we have a thirty point inspection list. So we always look at health and safety first and foremost. I think that's always important to us. And then secondly, preservation is important to us. That's why we think the the home improvement grants will continue to preserve, I think, you know, what I love about Midvale. And then homeownership is also important to us. It's a way to build wealth for family. And we've been doing this for quite some time, and it's been difficult for us when we started. I've been with the organization a long time. When I started building homes, they were costing me thirty-nine thousand dollars. And now they're costing us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's not the cost of land. And so it's been incredibly difficult and to help families get into housing. So the down payment grants have been critical. And we've been excited to see Salt Lake City and Murray and even Sandy come on board with down payment assistance grants for not only their city employees, but for their residents. So we're excited about this.
Can you remind me of the income limits for the down payment assistant program? I'm I'm just concerned that with housing prices so high, as you mentioned, you know, someone with a twenty-eight hundred dollar mortgage, being able to pay that twenty-eight hundred dollar mortgage per month, qualify for the down payment assistance based on income and, you know, have those things work out in the end.
And and that is the issue that we are facing today in other cities as well is we can provide the down payment assistance, but they can't qualify for that first mortgage. So for Salt Lake County, the eighty percent, for a family of four, that eighty percent A M I is eighty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. So HUD comes up with those numbers every spring, and it depends on the size of the household. So if it's one, two people, that's less. If it's more than four, so I use this as a typical household of four people. So if it's five, six, that number goes up a little bit, so. And I can provide that chart, it's provided from HUD, you know, every every spring, so.
And I'm not trying to put you guys on the spot. I'm just, you know, in my opinion, it would be very difficult for someone earning eighty thousand dollars per year to afford a twenty-eight hundred dollar a month mortgage payment.
So so I I would agree with you, but if I remember correctly, redevelopment dollars can go up to a hundred and twenty percent A M I, correct? And it's the C D B G dollars that are eighty percent and below. So we have these partnerships with lending institutions like U S, U S Bank, Key Bank, and Washington Federal, where we will do a, they'll do a lower first mortgage interest rate in terms of first mortgage, and then a second mortgage is a little bit lower. So, you know, it's a way to eliminate mortgage insurance premiums. So we try to sort of work with the existing products that are there, but I don't disagree with you.
I mean, if the city would like to increase that from twenty-five to thirty, I mean, you know, these are the number, the reality that we're in with the interest rates, unfortunately, is your your scenario is exactly where we're at today, so.
But but I think that's something, you know, as as we get those calls, we'll monitor that. And, you know, sometimes, I think part of my frustration with C D B G dollars is we would get families that were at eighty-one percent and we couldn't help them. So we like the redevelopment dollars because it allows us to go up to a hundred and twenty percent.
Well, I certainly don't want to make it any harder for people to access these funds, that's for sure. I just don't want to give any sort of false impression to folks to say, hey, with this down payment assistance, now all of a sudden, with your eighty thousand dollar income, you can afford a twenty-eight hundred dollar mortgage, which is not the case for most people.
I appreciate you using your experience and helping us amend the agreement. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, unless there's any other discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we pass resolution number twenty twenty-three eleven R D A approving the updated first amended and restated moderate income housing program administrative, administration services agreement between the redevelopment agency of Midvale City and Neighbor Works Salt Lake and the revised home repair loan program and down payment assistant housing programs. And that a copy of the updated agreement that was provided to the R D A board be attached to the meeting minutes for this meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rory, will you call roll?
Yes, Board Member Gettle.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Sperry.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
And Brown.
Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you so much. All right, item B, consider resolution number twenty twenty-three twelve R D A adopting first amendments to purchase agreement for the development of land between the redevelopment agency of Midvale City and the Court Partners LLC Development located at seventy-five fifty-five South Main Street. Cody.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. So we have three items in a row that are all related to the court, the basketball court development. It doesn't really make sense to just focus in on one because they're very much tied together. They relate to each other, they depend on each other. So I'm gonna be providing a broad, but also specific to each document, a little bit overview, just so that it all makes sense. Because it, like I said, it doesn't really make sense to look at each individual agreement in a vacuum because they all relate to this one project. And so questions about one specific agreement may be answered by another one. And so bear with me while I just provide a little bit of background and an overview of the three agreements that we're considering tonight. So the history of the court project, and and that's this project specifically, we have, in November of twenty twenty-one, there was, we sent out the request for proposals for the development of the the basketball court site. We received submissions and the selection committee came together and they decided that the Court Partners LLC provided the the proposal for development that most aligned with what we were looking for. And what we're looking for in this basketball court site is really the, something that fits the form-based code that enhances the Main Street area the best. And we felt that the Court Partners LLC's submission did that. And then we entered into the purchase agreement for the development of land. And then there were some concerns and and some issues that they were having. I'll move on to actually, I'm getting ahead of myself, sorry. So this is the, a couple of renderings of what they're proposing to to construct. It's three stories with commercial on the bottom floor, retail space, and sixteen units, residential units above. Two of them are studios and fourteen of them are one bedrooms. That's kind of a layout of of how that would look on the street and side views of of the buildings. Some of the the hurdles that that the developers have been having are increase in labor costs and material costs and financing, and it's not specific to them. It's it's, it really is a global issue, global inflation. And and the the market in which they are trying to enter and and get this project off the ground is is not very favorable. So we've been working with them on some solutions on how to help them overcome these impediments to development, which which really is the purpose of an R D A. And the solutions were specific adjustments to the original purchase agreement, which I'll get to in in detail. The upper floor housing initiative, which provides an incentive to provide affordable housing, which they'll be doing. And then the financer had some concerns about risks that could happen under default, and we found a a solution that works for all three parties. And the agreements that are really lined up to address those hurdles and solutions are the first amendments to the purchase agreement, the Main Street Upper Floor Housing Incentive Agreement, and the agreement regarding the purchase and finance. And so these three agreements all tie together and and help us overcome these these obstacles that the developer's been having. So what I am proposing first, so the 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 second item, the action item that we're looking at right now is the first amendments to the purchase agreement for the development of land. And the amendments that we're proposing are connecting the the other two agreements to it. So the finance agreement and the upper floor housing agreement. So that if they are to not meet the requirements of the upper floor housing initiative, so not offer the the rates that they're supposed to be at sixty percent A M I affordability, doing it for twenty years, then they would default under this agreement as well. It increases or extends the survivability of the agreement. And it adds additional indemnification because we're entering into agreement with the Court Partners LLC and Alta Bank. And removal of requirements for completion bond, which would increase the cost for them considerably and instead requiring personal guarantees, so not just a guarantee from the Court Partners LLC entity, but personal guarantees from the individuals that make up the Court Partners LLC. And so that is what the amendments to the agreement would do. There is an issue that we saw last minute in the agreement. And and it relates to something that the the lender is wanting, which is the lender is concerned, Alta Bank was concerned, that if the Court Partners default, that there was some ambiguity and they could be left with the project itself and the land, which they do not want. They would prefer that the R D A pay off the balance, any outstanding balance of the loan, and take the property and the project. And that is what the R D A, I believe, would also prefer. We wouldn't want it just up in the air, who is gonna take over this project should the developers default. And so we are in an agreement with the bank and the Court Partners LLC that if they are to default on their loan, on the purchase agreement for development, on the. on the, uh, upper floor housing incentive agreement, any of the agreements, if they default, then we would take the project that has been completed to that point, take the property, and pay off any outstanding principal that they owe on the loan without any prepayment penalty. It's advantageous to us because the developer's money is first in, about one point one million dollars, plus the costs of all their architecture renderings and everything that they've put into it to this point. Um, and all of that would be added to the, the value of the property that we would, uh, take. And so, um, removing what is outlined in red and just including shall be, so that we would, um, not be able to assign, which the bank doesn't want and we don't really want, but we would just assume the debt and the property, um, is, is what we are preferring to do. And so that is a, an amendment to this amendment, and I apologize for that. Um, are there questions at this point? I'm sorry, I know that was a lot.
What is the total loan that they're taking out from Alta?
It's about one point eight million. And it is a construction loan, so it would be provided in, in tranches, um, lining up with.
They could just run out, run away with the.
Exactly. They couldn't just grab one point eight and, and skip town.
Well, the one point eight's third, right? I mean, it's their funds, then RDA, then the loan.
One point one of theirs, and then one point nine of RDA, and that would also be distributed in tranches. And then, after that, then the bank would be last in. Correct.
So if they default, we, we're buying it. I mean, there's already three million dollars worth of money, really, that's been in, three million plus.
Correct. And one point one probably plus.
One point nine would be the RDA, but.
Yeah, but one point one would be theirs in addition to, uh, additional soft costs that have been put into it at this point. Okay.
How, oh, yeah. How do we make sure, what mechanism do we have to make sure they're renting at the proper amount and not overcharging?
That is a great question. Do you want to address that? Because it's an upper floor housing specific question?
Sure. Um, they're going to be following, um, the county and HUD's, um, AMI levels, and they're going to have to report to us every year, um, the lease rates based on the AMI levels of each tenant. Each tenant is going to have to continue to qualify each year as well, and then we approve, um, those lease rates based on their annual reports.
Well, it's the city's responsibility to make sure that they take care of.
And that's a, I mean, that's a covenant that's recorded, or, so then we, we, what's, what's the penalty if they're not complying?
The default. To seize the property, yeah.
They have a certain amount of time to, um.
They cure it?
Yeah.
They give them notice.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there's a cure period and, yeah, but the ultimate end would be default, which is tied into the purch, would, would be tied into the purchase agreement if, if you accept the amendments.
The real quick question I have, where I've seen other cities, not necessarily in Utah, get in trouble with this type of thing is, in the worst-case scenario, um, they default, and now we have to purchase that, um, property. Um, I've seen other cities in the past, you know, the people, the residents are like, oh, my God, I didn't even know there was this much of my taxpayer money put into this building, and now we have to buy it for one point whatever million. Um, so you're saying that if that worst-case scenario happened, we would be purchasing something for less than what it is worth by a significant amount of money, perhaps?
Not for less than it's worth. So the investment that's going into it is, um, it's the one point one plus our one point nine plus the bank's one point eight. And so we would only be on the hook for whatever outstanding principal amount was to Alta Bank, which is the one point eight million dollar loan. And there's no prepayment penalties, um, per our agreement that we're going to be considering.
So in that worst-case scenario, we would be breaking even?
We, no, you were right the way that you said it the first time.
I thought so.
We would be paying off the loan, but the amount that the developer has put into the asset, we would just be assuming. Yeah, so we would.
Okay.
Right, sorry, I understood that.
Okay.
Opposite.
So then we wouldn't get into the problem of people's, with pitchforks saying, oh, my God, how did you get into such a bad land deal?
Correct.
We'd have people coming saying, thank, thank you for being so smart.
We'll distract it by pointing to a parking structure. We own.
The, the.
Costs more.
The, the penalties on this, I mean, when you really look at it, we, we spent a lot of time, we've spent a lot of time putting together all these remedies. The remedies in, in the situation of whether they're not charging the right AMI and the penalties of whether they're going to default are so extreme that they kind of, um, very much push the, push the developer to finish the project. Like, it's very, it would be very, very rare that they would walk away from it with so much invested in the asset.
Okay.
Um, including once the deed restriction is on for those twenty years, it would be to say, to all of a sudden say, oh, we're, we're going to charge a little bit more rent, and by doing that, we have the, you know, the city, the RDA has the ability to take the property for, you know, a very significant, uh, less value than what the property is worth. The whole point of that is to make it so that they just don't do it. It's like never going to be worth it for them to.
This is literally a game of Monopoly, then.
Basically, yeah. Yeah, we, we have boardwalk and park rap places.
Oh, and also, in addition to that, to, for, the bank will not be paying out the full loan amount as a lump sum. So we will be watching those disbursements. And so even assuming the developer didn't put the one point one million dollars in or whatnot, the city will never be exposed, or the RDA will never be exposed more than the current value of the property itself.
That's perfect.
So, um, once, if, if the bank has put in two hundred thousand dollars and we're paying off that two hundred thousand dollars, it's going to be two hundred thousand dollars more than what we put in.
Okay, that makes perfect sense. Thank you.
And a lot of effort and detail orientation was put towards making sure that we could seamlessly assume the architect's renderings contract and the construction contract, so that if they were to default during the construction period, we could very seamlessly not just assume the debt, but also assume the project and continue it.
Okay, any other?
Oh, and the recommended motion as shown here is different from the one in the packet because it's added that additional language, and I apologize for how long it is.
I'd entertain a motion, if anybody's up for it.
Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and pass resolution number twenty-two-three-twelve RDA, adopting First Amendments to Purchase Agreement for the Development of Land between Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City and the Court Partners LLC Development located at seven-five-five-five South Main Street, with the following changes to three point three. Removal may be assigned and assumed by an assignee of the RDA or, and, and, that RDA is an intended third-party beneficiary of developer's obligations to the lender, and including the word shall be to read two, in the event of a default by developer, any deed of trust related to the constru, construction financing shall be purchased by the RDA, and three, all bonds provided by the contractor shall identify RDA as a co-obligee.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rory, will you call roll?
Yes, excuse me, Board Member Gettle.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Ms. Berry.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
And Brown.
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. All right, item C, consider resolution number twenty-two-three-thirteen RDA, approving the Main Street Upper Floor Housing Incentive Agreement with the Court Partners Development located at seventy-five fifty-five South Main Street.
All right, thank you again. Um, so, I mean, this is approving the, uh, incentive agreement for the Upper Floor Housing Initiative. Um, I don't think I need to repeat all this. Um, but just a reminder, this incentive is funded by the Restricted Affordable Housing Funds generated through tax increment from our three project areas, Bingham Junction, Jordan Bluffs, and the Main Street CDA. A quick overview of Upper Floor Housing Initiative. It was approved in twenty nineteen. This is the first application to date, although we are talking with multiple developers about this program. So hopefully we'll be able to, um, provide more affordable housing in the near future. Um, it provides, um, up to fifty percent of the total rehabilitation or development costs related to the, um, affordable units. We want them to be high-quality for, um, households eighty percent AMI and below, and they must be mixed-use, the project must be used, mixed-use to conform with the Form-Based Code. Um, so the goals are bigger than just affordable housing. Um, this incentive is really to help revitalize Main Street, bring activity to the street, create a new, unique sense of place, um, more residents, and decrease crime rates through passive, um, surveillance. Um, this is really, i- it's, it's, it's an important incentive for the, um, the growth of Main Street, and it will also provide in the long-term more affordable housing funds as Main Street continues to grow. Um, so just a quick overview, um, we went over this the last time, but on the left in the blue, those are the requested terms from the application, and on the right, those are the approved terms, uh, approved by the RDA after our review of their, um, application. So again, one point nine million, um, that, which turns out to be forty percent of the development costs for the affordable units. All units are sixty, um, percent AMI below, and it's a twenty-year, uh, deed restriction with a fifteen-year buyback option. Um, residents will save between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty dollars a month on their rent. Um, some of the key terms in the agreement include the amount, uh, all units are sixty percent AMI. I just went over this. Um, some, some new additions since we last spoke are the, is the fact that the developer will now submit an annual lease rate, which I just, um, spoke about with Glover's question, and that will have to be approved by the RDA. Um, and Cody talked about this also, that there, um, one of the terms in the agreement is that the developer contributes one point one million to the project, and then our disbursements will start. Um, the last item that is, um, added to the, um, agreement terms is that we're requiring, requiring builder's risk insurance.
What does that mean?
That is something maybe Nate can answer. I could answer, but it'll take me a little bit longer.
That, that typically just means that, the, that there's insurance to cover the progress payments if for some reason, uh, I'm trying to think of a situation where that would.
So if they build it, they default it, and they hadn't paid the contractors?
There's subs, there's subs and things like that, then that would, that would be what they would go after with that insurance, yeah. There's a lot of different scenarios where that would.
I'm sure there is.
Come into play, but, but, yeah.
It's mostly during the construction, right?
It's, it's, it's all during the construction.
So it's construction insurance, basically, is a better way to.
If something happens, it burns down or something like that, it kicks in and.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say it's more developer insurance, I guess, but yeah.
Oh.
Kind of covers both of those sites. Um, and the key to that is that the, that the RDA is named on that as well. So we have the ability to make a claim on that.
We like Sugar House, the whole thing burns down, and you're left with nothing.
You never want something like that to happen.
That would be covered under, yeah, there's other insurance.
Insurance, okay. Thank you. All right, any questions, comments for Maggie?
I just have one quick clarifying question. So this, the court is going to be sixteen total units, two studios and fourteen one-bedroom apartments. And then of those sixteen units, they're all going to be affordable housing units.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, that's lovely.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number twenty-two-three-thirteen RDA, approving the Main Street Upper Floor Housing Incentive Agreement for the Court Partners Development located at seventy-five fifty-five South Main Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rory, will you call roll?
Yes. My computer's dying. Slow and painful death. Um, Council, excuse me, Board Member Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Ms. Berry.
Aye.
And Robinson.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. All right, item D, consider resolution number twenty-two-three-fourteen RDA, adopting and entering into the Agreement Regarding Purchase and Finance with the Court Partners LLC and Alta Bank Concerning the Development Located at Seventy-five Fifty-five South Main Street. Cody.
Thank you, and Mayor. Um, yeah, as stated before, uh, all this agreement does is it is a three-way agreement between us, the financer, Alta Bank, and the Court Partners LLC. And it is an agreement that should the developer default, that the RDA will assume the outstanding principal of their one point eight million dollar, uh, construction loan. And.
What's that?
Yeah, assume and immediately pay off.
Not assume?
Just pay off. And, um, that we wouldn't be able to assign it to anyone else, and, um, that, that's, that's basically what the agreement does. Um, and here's some numbers that you were kind of alluding to, uh, Council Member, Board Member Gettle, uh, the fiscal impact. So, um, of the four point eight million dollar increase in assets, a maximum of three point seven would come from the RDA funds, and that would be the total amount of the construction loan, the one point eight million, and then the one point nine million from the RDA Affordable Housing Funds.
But that would be, they have completed the project, and with the last dollar owing defaulted.
Exactly. That's the absolute maximum that would come from the RDA funds feasibly, yeah.
If that were to happen, a lot of terrible things would have also happened along the way.
Yeah. Any questions about this?
There's none. I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move this, to suspend the rules and move that we pass resolution number twenty-two-three-fourteen RDA, adopting and entering into the Agreement Regarding Purchase and Finance with the Court Partners LLC and Alta Bank Concerning the Development Located at Seven-five-five-five South Main Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rory, will you call roll with your dying computer?
Yes. Board Member Gettle.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Ms. Berry.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
And Brown.
Here.
Okay, that.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, moving into our discussion, item, uh, discussion regarding proposed amendments to the Main Street facade improvement program. Kate, you've been waiting so patiently. I'm just so excited to hear what you have to say.
Yes, well, thank you, uh, Mayor and Board. Um, so I'm bringing before the Board tonight, as you said, a discussion on some proposed amendments to the facade improvement program. That's not Main Street.
It's like, wait a minute, I don't.
It could be. Um, so, yeah, so I just wanted to kind of give a program update, um, since it was adopted on December sixth of last year. And we've had a lot of interest in the program. We've talked to a lot of the property owners and business owners on Main Street, but there has not been any actual participation. Um, in speaking with these potential applicants, um.
Is the, the brick, not, the brick being done on the bank, not part of this? Oh. Oh, that got awkward.
Um, so in speaking with these potential.
Program.
Yeah.
That's right.
Applicants about, uh, you know, the reasoning for, for not participating, um, they've provided us with some feedback. The first one being that with the increased cost of construction, um, it's prohibited, many of them, from moving forward despite the funding that would be provided in this program. So for example, um, the bank building, the renovation and the rebuild of some, of the original facade features is going to cost around two hundred thousand dollars to do both facades. Um, and then the proposal of the marquee that would go up on the pearl that they had designed, that is going to cost roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, the other piece of feedback that we got back was that, um, there was hesitancy to enter into the program um, because of the easement that would be held in perpetuity. Um, this was mainly for projects that were less extensive, for example. Um, this was mainly for projects that were less extensive, for example, replacing windows um or putting on new paint on the building. Um, so in hopes of making this program more effective and useful in the transformation of the street, staff has taken the feedback and is proposing some changes to the program terms. Um, the first being increasing the maximum grant award to fifty thousand um per project with a provision that allows for an additional twenty-five thousand for buildings on corner lots. So that would be, for example, like the bank building or any other corner lots that have two facades that face a public road or a public parking lot. And the other is um in regards to the easement terms, which we would have determined by you, the Board. Uh, recommendations would come from the advisory board and the recommendations would be kind of based on the type of improvements being made. So it could be anywhere from five to ten years to uneasement being held in perpetuity. I think that a lot of the um recommendations will kind of be tailored to, one, the life of the improvement. So the life of paint is about five years, so it kind of makes sense to have an easement term that would last that long. All the way up to elements that you would like to see, um, that you believe is vital to the look and the feel of the street and you would want to protect that for the foreseeable future on the street, like a sign. Um, all the other terms would remain the same, so again, the grant award cannot exceed more than fifty percent of the project. It would be provided as a reimbursement, um, they would have to release all their liens, they would have to maintain and keep in good repair the facade. And the, they need to have, um, if the building is vacant, they need to have a plan to um have a tenant within twelve months of completing that project.
Can I ask a question about that? So what if someone, rather than, you know, someone buying the building to then lease it out to a tenant, would it also apply to someone who purchases a building with the intent of using it themselves rather than? Because you, you mentioned like they'd have to have a tenant.
Yeah, I think, I think-
So what if they are the tenant?
Yeah, I think as long as the building is occupied.
Okay.
Um, because, I mean, that would be like the hive is operating the pearl and they have occupied that building, but they also own it, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a little, I don't know, disappointed in that Pearl situation because I, we gave them a sweetheart loan, right? That was, especially with today's rates astronomically, like we shouldn't have done it. Because part of it was like, here's what this is gonna look like, which in my opinion included a very large marquee to bring it to look like it. So next time we give a loan out like that, I think, you know, what's presented should be what's delivered, right? Because what is that percentage rate we gave them, like on that loan? You know, that could be forgiven, like, I can't remember what it was.
I believe it was one point.
Yeah, what's the current rate, like what's the current rate to, seven and a half percent, right? Like, so we gave them and now they're like, oh, you know, even though you gave us like practically free money, we're actually not gonna build it to look like what we, what we showed you unless you give us a bunch more money, right? Like, to me, that's kind of an unethical maneuver and it's hard for me to get behind it when, you know, like watching the brick uh redo, which I super think is awesome to watch, is super labor-intensive, it's on two sides, it's almost the cost of, of the marquee. I just, I'm, I'm more, I would like to get second opinions on some, some of these before we just say, hey, what, you know, you're right, it's a hundred and forty grand and here's, here's the cost, because it seems a little weird to me that the marquee costs, it, granted, it is big a- and, and looks cool. Labor is so expensive, so the idea that, you know, redoing brick is two hundred grand, but a marquee is a hundred and sixty.
We have, um, as part of the application, we do require that they provide us with three quotes to show that it is actually, yeah.
Okay, that, appreciate it.
So they can't just like choose the most expensive that they like the best.
It's like their brother, that's like, you know, that's what I was like.
Yeah, so they do have to provide three quotes showing that they're going with the most competitive ones.
It's just, it's just like I said, I'm very disappointed that a group that got a practically free money is not, in my opinion, delivering. And, and if that's not part of our loan projects going forward, we need to make it. Because I would be like, hey, if we're giving this to you to revi- revitalize it, because we kind of wanted to keep it that look and feel, that should be part of it.
I do want to say that in discussions of the loan, I, they made it known that the loan wouldn't go, like, they wouldn't be able to pay for the sign just with the loan money, because I, the money also went for the acquisition of the property, but yes.
It's just a good deal and, and that's part of it.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
Because the low, the low interest loan that Board Member Brown is talking about is, that was completely different than the facade.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, but in their proposal, they did say like these were the renov-, these are the renovations that we have planned. They didn't necessarily specify like how much money would go to each and they did make it known that most of the funding would go towards the acquisition of the property, but it did play a role in what kind of rate they had because they hit those certain criteria, the selection criteria which reduced their rate. And one of the things they said was that they would kind of restore-
Have they fulfilled on everything else that they've needed to?
Um, yes, uh, they occupy the second floor, they are activating the theater and they work with various community groups. They just recently met to kind of explore the potential of upper floor housing, which they also included in their-
Proposal.
Proposal. Yeah, but the facade improvements is the only thing that hasn't really taken off as quickly. They have removed what was there before, but-
And I wish they wouldn't have until they were ready to put something else there, you know, but.
Is it possible?
Proposed changes.
Yeah.
I mean, we need, we need Main Street to redevelop, right? I mean, that's what this whole thing's about. You said we, you've been out talking to them for a year and nobody's been willing to do it, so.
Yeah, yeah, there's been a lot of deterrence. So, yeah, I mean, really these changes are to just get the money out and we can start getting an impact on the street and um just to get those meaningful improvements that are really gonna create that sense of place. I think it'll also help bring in new tenants into those vacant buildings. I think a lot of times when you drive down the street, it can be hard to see the potential, but if we, they can start seeing the transformation, then there's a lot more excitement about it, so. I mean, I'm just thinking about the walk on Main Street and seeing the renderings of what is planned for the street, I think that that was exciting for people to see, so.
I like the, I like the bank, what's going on? Even though it seems slow, slow, you can see the, I didn't mean that rude. Because you're trying to like re, you know, make it look like it was, so that's like an actual restoration. At first I was like, God, this looks dumb, and then like a month later, I'm like, oh, I can actually tell that there's legitimate work. So when that's done, it will be cool.
Yeah. Um, and then just one last thing, if, when I bring this back, the proposed changes are approved, um, we're just gonna recommend an increase in the program budget, um, which would allow for two of the fifty thousand dollar projects and one of the two facade ones potentially for a bank building, but-
What's the current budget?
Um, it is, yeah, sorry, it, it's one fifty, which, or one oh five, excuse me. It's one oh five, which was for three projects and so increasing this would allow for-
For two.
It, for two fifty thousand dollar, uh, if they were to achieve the maximum. Um, we may get smaller projects, like I said, which is for new windows and they would get a lower grant award. But yeah, we'll come back with the budget amendment for that.
And then so the next-
RDA, CDA, they've got the money for that, right, Nate?
So the next person who wanted to apply for this money would have to wait until the next fiscal year?
No, so for this fiscal year, but-
So what if there was a, a third, Tris Gatos, for instance, now they want to improve their facade?
Oh, a third?
Do we have money for anyone else?
I mean, yes, this is more, I'm, I've limited the budget because I wanted to see what the interest would be. I first said it kind of based on people that I, or properties that I knew were interested before the program was actually approved. This is kind of the same situation where I have a general idea of how many people might apply. And like I said, there may be smaller projects that are interested that will make additional changes along the street, so.
So we do have more money, is the answer?
Yes, sorry.
That's all right, thank you.
That's where, we're all enjoying Nate's face when we asked if it was on.
I'm trying not to talk.
No, we got it, you were gonna like, oh, yeah.
We're good, we're good. No, there's, there's, there's sufficient funds that, um, within there to put towards this program.
I don't think you heard me, I called you Scrooge and Dex, women and your cash over here.
That's, that was the role that I had in Park City for twelve years. I learned to sit in the back and nod as, as slightly as you possibly could. Do we have money in a cringe and nod?
Bring on the placards, plac- oh, placades.
Placades. Thank you.
Appreciate it, I'm excited about this. One of the comments I heard recently at a Main Street Business Alliance meeting was how some of the businesses wanted to participate in this program, but the building owner didn't always want to and so hopefully this helps. I know that we have businesses that are really interested in it, so hopefully it makes those building owners more comfortable.
Yes.
Appreciate it. All right. Motion, do it, John. Is there a second?
Second.